Good evening, everyone. For those of you watching out there, those in the audience, welcome to our City Council Budget Study Session, April 17th, 2018. We will be reviewing the proposed budget for fiscal years 2019 and 2020. On the agenda, we have public works and capital improvement projects, water and waste, water resources, and police. And we'll go with Agenda Item or Number One, Public Works and Capital Projects.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. This is the Public Works Budget Presentation. Whoops. There we go. The mission statement of the Public Works Department is to effectively provide services that preserve and improve the community's environment, infrastructure, parks, and assets. This is our organizational chart, and if you put on some binoculars, you might be able to read that. This is what it currently is, and if you have the packet, and I can hardly read it when it's sitting in front of me. There is also a proposed organizational chart. The difference between the two is there's actually an elimination of four vacant positions in the department, where there's a vacant custodial position that will be eliminated. There is a vacant traffic signal technician position that's being eliminated. There's a vacant mechanics position that's being eliminated, and there's one maintenance worker in the street division that's being eliminated. And in all those cases, the primary reason for the elimination is that we, for example, the mechanics, we've had that fifth mechanic position on the books and not filled for at least two years now because we thought we were going to need it. Turns out, our garage is working so efficiently that they're doing an excellent job right now, and we just don't think we need that extra position. We're more than happy to let it go so that it's not tying up important general fund monies. And that's including the fact that this year, we took on the responsibility for maintaining the city of Brisbane's fire trucks in addition to our own. So we obviously don't need the position because we're taking on extra outside work with the four mechanics, lead mechanic and supervisor that we have. And I think the same is true, especially in traffic signal and street lighting. We've off and on had two positions there, but essentially only had one, only had two positions when we were in the last two years because we knew our lead traffic signal technician was going to retire, and we wanted a lot of time to have transfer of information from our old lead technician to the new staff. So all the positions that have been eliminated are vacant at the moment. Our core services include managing and protecting the city's infrastructure through land development, review, and encroachment permitting, ensure completion of all capital projects, maintain the city's fleet to 278. It says 78, but that number could be anywhere from 270 to 280 at any given time, since we're buying and selling vehicles almost on a continual basis, provide maintenance and custodial services to 54 city buildings, maintain all of our parks, streets, street medians, and miscellaneous rights away the landscaping on them. We maintain the city's transportation system, including 150 miles of streets. That number was supposed to be changed. I hope I got the right presentation, because we have more streetlights than that. It says 3200, it's actually more like 35, 50, streetlights. 6,000 signs, we replaced $40,000 worth of no parking signs on a street sweeping day because they fade out over time, and they were getting so faded that people couldn't read them. You could read them on one side, but you couldn't read them on the other side. So somebody might look down the street and go, "There's nothing on that sign," but on the other side of the sign face, that wasn't facing the sun or whatever, it says, "Don't park there on this day at this time." We clean catch basins, there's about 1,200 of them to meet regulatory requirements of the Regional Water Control Board, and we maintain the Muscle Rock landfill site, also to meet regulatory requirements of both the Coastal Commission and Regional Water Control Things that we do to support the priorities of the city is in the area of public safety. We make sure that all of our playgrounds are inspected on a monthly basis, and by inspected, I don't mean just looking at them. We have several employees that are certified playground inspectors, and they inspect all of the top lot equipment to make sure that it's safe for the kids to play on, on a monthly basis. To the degree we can, we ensure that all of our streetlights and traffic signals are working properly so that the roadways and the environment of neighborhoods are safe for motor public and provide a nighttime lighting for security. Traffic and transportation, we ensure New Development mitigates the impact of its traffic growth, and we maintain the streets and sidewalks and trails and other transportation infrastructure. As we said before, in areas of leisure service, basically, we maintain all the city buildings, parks, and libraries, and recreation facilities so that they can be used to serve the needs of the citizens and the leisure services department, library department. In area of infrastructure, we maintain all the city's infrastructure, not with the exception of water, wastewater, obviously, for the wet utilities, but all the other infrastructure we maintain. In land use, we participate in the land development review process and with the Community Development Department and work on things like developer impact fees and parcel maps and final maps and all the conditions of improvement that go along with them, that are our conditions or our water wastewaterers. Some of the accomplishments in the last fiscal year, or two fiscal years, we completed the John Daly Boulevard Street Escape Project, which includes bio squalls and other green streets, infrastructure. We completed the police department and shooting range remodel projects. We completed the street resurfacing on Unipiscera Boulevard, San Pedro Road, Geneva Avenue. We completed two annual slurry seal projects in the Westlake neighborhood and the Bay Shore neighborhood. Those slurry seal projects that we do religiously on a seven-year cycle to cover the entire city is the backbone of our pavement preventative maintenance program and is one of the reasons why the city's pavement condition index that is registered with MTC actually is about 80, which is, for most cities, extremely high. We're in the upper echelons of road quality in terms of our pavement compared to other cities. Other cities that I've worked for, we were lucky if we could get near 75, and there's a huge difference.
I always remind people, Mission Street is not-
Not ours. That's right. I mean-
The models are like six to eight.
I've never worked for a city, never had the pleasure of a city that had such good pavement, and it's a testament to the Public Works Department and the staff I work with, and good planning on the part of the City Council that we continue to fund a really robust program and are doing a good job maintaining our pavement, because that's one thing where once you lose it, it costs a hundred, a thousand times somewhere to replace it. A slurry seal costs like pennies a square foot, and reconstruction rehabilitations in dollars to multiple dollars a square foot. We did a seawall repair project at the Muscle Rock landfill site this year, and also in Kelly did the access and maintenance project out there to make it a little easier for people to enjoy that as an open space recreational area, and that access and maintenance plan was actually a condition of the seawall repair permit that we had to get from the California Coastal Commission. We completed the Geneva bike pit improvements, which included some bulb outs and bike lanes that were installed on Geneva Avenue. Some other accomplishments, we converted, we're almost done with this, we've converted, literally, you know that we have high voltage regulated output streetlights, about a quarter of our inventory, about 850 lights are regulated output, high voltage lights, and we can't cost-effectively retrofit those to LED. But all of the rest of our streetlights are now going to be LED retrofitted. That project's just about ready to be completed in about a week. There have been crews running all over town replacing those lights for about the last We completed our facilities assessment project, which you saw a study session on a couple weeks ago. We installed 450 storm drain trash capture devices to meet our Regional Water Control Board municipal regional permit conditions, which is aiming for no trash getting out of the city through the storm drain system by 2024. Right now, we have, I think, a total of about 700 of those things installed, which is about half of our catch basins. We did smaller projects too. You know, the maintenance guys, they handle smaller projects like replacing the wood handrails at War Memorial with stainless steel ones because the wooden ones just couldn't stand up to the amount of wear and tear that they were getting, and they were constantly broken and leaving the stairway in an unsafe condition. We replaced and upgraded the fire alarm system at the Ceremony Library, which is also a fairly significant project for the maintenance staff. We completed elevator control modernizations and rehabilitation of the Civic Center North elevators before the two county tenants would move in. We issued over 800 encroachment permits to different utilities and contractors that work in public streets to make sure that they do proper traffic control, and when they dig a hole in the street, that they repair the street in a way that maintains that infrastructure for us. Some of our goals and objectives for the coming year is to complete all the budgeted CIP projects, which includes, or planned inclusion, because you will see a separate CIP presentation after this one. So this is a list that compares some of our in-process projects and some of the ones that would probably be included with the CIP that you're going to adopt. We're basically, because we have more money available to us for road repair because of SB 1 passage and an increase in gasoline tax, that we can do a lot of other transportation and road-related things that are not pavement-related, because what that bill was really for was to get cities that have these streets that are down in the 70 range in their PCI score or even lower, to get them more money to get their roads up to shape, because our roads are actually in really good shape, we can spend that money on other things. So this first project that's listed there is to replace and upgrade the city's traffic signal control system so that we'll have more modern equipment, because a lot of the stuff, for lack of a better term, they're kind of like a glorified computer, the traffic signal controllers, and the software and the equipment gets old, just like the one in your desk, and they're always trying to upgrade and move on, and we need to do that for our systems as well. We're going to replace all of the lights on the John Daly overcrossing on Highway 280. Those are the blue double-headed poles. Well, what happened was is the pole base has started to rust out. You can't see it because at the bottom of the pole, there are anchor bolts that bolted to the bridge, and there's a little decorative cap, just like a tin can, that covers it so that they look nice and you don't see the bolts. When you lift that little cap up, some of them, the bottom of the pole, was rusted like halfway through. So during an inspection, we went out there and they started lifting those things up and realized then that they were starting to rust out pretty bad, so we actually took down, I think, four or eight poles on the north side of the bridge and put, you know, we took most of the lights down, we took, I think, eight lights down on the south side of the bridge and took four lights from the north side of the bridge and moved them to the south side of the bridge so that we basically were only moving about, losing about four lights on each side of the bridge because we felt those poles were just too unsafe to leave up because they were so rusted. We've actually already purchased the poles because we wanted exact matches with those, except those two will be LED. They'll look just like the old ones, but they'll be LED in the future, and we purchased those ourselves so that we can get them from the same manufacturer, and we're about ready to let a contract out to have those reinstalled. We have a project that's already in process called the Central Corridor Bike and pedestrian Improvements Projects, which does a lot of bike and pedestrian improvement projects throughout the city, but fundamentally, it does basically the corridor that goes from Eastmore across the freeway down through San Pedro and up on Washington all the way to Guadalupe, and also does a crisscross by coming up JS. That project, I know a lot of everyone's interested in us getting grants, that's over $2 million, and it's almost 100% a grant. We are planning to finish the Miriam Elbertal Sewer Project for DWR, as well as the Southgate Park Plaza, San Fernando Sewer Rehabilitation Project for them. Again, we are going to rehabilitate the Alto Loma Park. It's a small park, but again, this is one where we were able to get a grant that's going to pay about 30% to 50% of the cost of rehabilitating that park. If you're familiar with Norwood Park, it's the same source of funds, and we'll be doing about the same kind of thing. It's pretty much an overhaul of the entire small park. And we'll also be completing the 2019 OBag 2 Street Resurfacing Project, and OBag stands for One Bay Area Government. This is a grant program that comes from MTC, and that's another multi-million dollar grant we got from MTC for that project. Some of our other goals are to complete the bicycle pedestrian master plan, which we just got rolling on that, as well as the park master plan, got rolling on that recently. We've been doing, basically, starting to do some, not, we probably won't do outreach on park master plan until summer when school's out and we have people's attention a little better, hopefully. But both of those projects, the consultants have been hired, and the staff teams working on them have all been set up, and they're starting to do their background and research. And actually, the two consultants on these are going to be sharing some of their outreach type efforts, and they're talking about combining their website efforts and stuff like that to try to reach out to the public. We're going to be replacing a couple of generators at three fire stations. Two of these are actually already budget projects, and a third one would be part of the new CIP coming up in the next two years. If you're not familiar with the name Lucity, that's our asset management system, and although there was an old legacy asset management system that water wastewater used fairly rigorously, the Public Works Department, for whatever reason, never really got on board with the old munich-based system. And because it's been on the cusp of being replaced pretty much ever since I here, we didn't invest in trying to get our inventories and stuff into that system. But now, after about, almost a two-year effort between deciding which software we wanted to buy, buying the software, working with the consults, working with our staff, it took a long time to get this system online and get it configured for our needs. But it is up and running now, and I, both departments, water wastewater and the Public Works Department are using the system now, so we're going to continue to implement that because some of our inventories are not actually set up yet. But it's going to give us a heck of a lot better control over our maintenance work in the future because we'll be able to, with this data, as we collect it, most of it's done, you can collect data on an iPhone, you can collect it on an iPad, you can go to your desktop, and so the Public Works employees and the water wastewater employees can input all this information.
So they're out in the field.
They're out in the field, and they got a little bit of time, they can go to and say, "This is what I did today on this." So that when we get done, you can start looking at what individual buildings cost to maintain, what individual projects that are maintenance-driven cost, because, I mean, to put it in perspective, I talk a lot about capital projects because they're single, unique things that we work on. But the lion's share of what Public Works really does is day-to-day maintenance. And I know this might sound unbelievable to you, but we clean bathrooms someplace between 25,000 and 35,000 times a year. There's that many bathroom cleanings that go on in a year. You just multiply the number of bathrooms times the number of days in a year, and that's how many it comes out to. It's about 30,000. So, you know, I could do the same thing and say, "That's, you know, we mow X thousands acre lawn because we have 100 acres of lawn or whatever, and we mow it X number of times a year." So a lot of what we do is just day-to-day maintenance, whether it's parks, or, you know, you could count how many times we do an oil change on a different vehicle or whatever. A lot of what we do is just day-to-day stuff, and it's hard to quantify until you just add it all up and you see a giant number. But it's not very interesting to talk about.
It'd cause a lot of trouble if it wasn't done.
If it wasn't done, you got it. We're going to replace the fuel management system at both the DWR and the Public Works Corporation Yard, where we have a key system where you drive up and we capture data from the key systems, and we can track how much gas different vehicles use and which employee takes the gas and which vehicle takes the gas. And that key system also is how people get into the corporation yard, and I assume water wastewater after hours. And we intend to continue to work cooperatively on all of our land development review type stuff that we do in conjunction with Department of Water Wast- excuse me, ECD. Significant changes that have happened since the last two-year budget, we filled up several long vacant positions, including Richard Chu, my assistant director over there. We recruited for that position several times, and it was vacant for a long time before we found Mr. Chu. But that also left us with the four vacancies that we are eliminating. So we fully implemented the Lucity Asset Management System, but still need to do more work to get it 100% up and running. We began fire truck maintenance for the city of Brisbane, like I said earlier. We assume responsibly and oversight for the city's stormwater program. DWR used to do that, but, and they still do their own activity in relation to stormwater compliance, but the overall coordination of all the different activities, all the different departments, because there are multiple departments that have to do different things to maintain our compliance, we kind of look out for the overall program at this point. We started providing street median landscape maintenance with contract services. We actually used to use contract services years ago when I first came to work here. Then, as we tried to reduce our budget, we actually terminated the contractor and took on that landscape, median landscape with our parks crews, and paid them with gas tax funds because the landscape maintenance is in the street, and that's an appropriate expenditure of gas tax funds, which allowed us to take some burden off of the general fund. But then, as we lost a couple of employees and had some vacancies, it was actually better for us to go back and let the contractor do it. So we actually rehired the same contractor we used to have, we just didn't have him for about five years while the crews, our own crews, were doing it. And all of that back and forth stuff was to deal with a continuing budget shortfall and our desire to try to shrink the workforce so that there was less long-term health and retirement benefits associated with full-time employees, and just to try to be as efficient as we could.
Is that all of the median landscape or just certain-
No, it's pretty much the whole city. It's, and it's more, the contract we have with them is more robust than the old one was, and it has actually more in it, but the price of the contract is higher than the old contract because we're having them do more than they used to do in the old days. But they're doing a fairly good job. But I'll have some other more positive news about median landscape and when I talk about the CIP. One of the things we also had to do to adjust for changing workforces is that we used to actually contract out a lot of our miscellaneous concrete repair. When there was a sidewalk that needed repair because it was torn up by a city-maintained street, or whatever, we typically used to contract that out because we had contractors that were interested in doing that kind of work. With the economy on fire right now, we cannot, we can't even get contractors to bid on that work. So what we did was, we bought a small concrete mixing trailer that, and we now have, and we filled some of our positions that were vacant for a while in the street maintenance division, and now they're doing all of our miscellaneous concrete work, and it's actually turning out to be more expedient because our crews are more responsive than the contractor And that's what our budget looks like in terms of round numbers. The one thing that you might notice is if you look down at our depreciation and capital outlay, especially capital outlay, that there is a significant difference there, see, 8 million in one year and 6 million in the next year, and then almost nothing by comparison in the next few years. That's because that hasn't been posted. That's actually how much nonutility money got spent in the general fund with the last two years, 8.5 million in one year and almost 7 million in another year. So until the capital fund is, budget is actually approved, we don't really 100% know what those numbers are going to look like. So it's a little harder to compare the bottom line on this slide, but you can see, despite all of our efforts to try to cut the budget, almost every number on there is going up except that capital one, and when that capital one gets filled in, they'll all be going up probably, or the bottom line will definitely be going up and not going down. One of the things that I think is a little, is a little more, it's kind of unique to Public Works, most other departments don't have this. Public Works is funded by a whole variety of different kinds of funds. All of the street repair work is funded by gas tax, park maintenance, and some of the engineering function is funded by general fund. We get a little tiny bit because we do work for the Linda Vista Assessment District. Engineers who work on capital projects are actually budgeted into the general capital, so whatever capital project they're working on actually pays for their time. So if they're working on a road repair project that's funded with gas tax, they're not being charged to a general fund account, they're being charged to a gas. I mean, technically, we are paying their check out of the general fund, but for every dollar we spend, we replace it with a dollar of gas tax. And motor vehicles and building maintenance is are both internal service funds where user departments pay into those funds for our services to either replace their vehicles or maintain their vehicles or to maintain their buildings. So pure general fund in our department is only about 20% of the total budget. So when you see those pie charts of the general fund, you'll see a fairly small slice for Public Works, and I think one year you asked it, Judith, we said, "How does Public Works get so much stuff done with such a little budget?" Well, it's because you're only seeing about a quarter of it.
I'm not seeing the full-
Yeah, you are not, because all those other, those are all dedicated funds, they can only be used for certain things, like gas tax, you can only use that money inside the road right away. You can use it for a storm drain or a tree maintenance or landscaping or pavement, whatever you want, but it's got to be inside the road right away. Of the general fund, this is kind of how it breaks down, about 3 million a year for salaries and benefits, services and supplies, about 10% of that, and fixed charges are another 20% of that, for a total of about $4 million. And like I said, the lion's share of that is park maintenance. Employees of the park maintenance department and about five or six employees in the engineering department are actually budgeted out of general fund, and that's what breaks up that particular part of our budget because general fund's the one that always seems to be under stress. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much, Director Fuller, and thank you for the whole department for ins- Thank you very much, Director Fuller, and thank you for the whole department for ensuring our city infrastructure is intact and safe for our communities. At this point, I will open up the questions towards my colleagues and I'll ask my questions after.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On page two of the sheet that we received under S, SB one.
The one, I'm more than happy to ask the question, just so you know, that's for the CIP presentation.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll, we'll be covering.
It's, it's the next one up after this.
Okay.
Question.
Uh-huh.
You don't like that key bathrooms. So where are we on the bathroom situation?
Um.
Toilets basically.
Yeah. We are, when it comes to the porta potty type bathrooms, if we're asked to cut our general fund budget, as I told you bef, earlier, the lion's share of our general fund budget is in the parks department. The parks department is the one who pays for the porta potties. We have about that much money to support that department. It's extremely small. So when it, if we're asked to cut our budget because we need to cut something, porta potties is something we have to cut. It's not a lot of money. Well, for just throwing it out there, it's like $10,000. But the difference for us is, well, it's $10,000 for porta potty or it's $10,000 to replenish the fi bar in a fall pit under a playground. And so if we don't have the money, we just don't have the money. And if we're requested to, to cut things, it gets down to that's, that's small an item.
So how many of our parks do not have a bathroom toilet?
The majority. The only ones that have fixed bathrooms are the large ones like Geller, Westlake, um, the.
Are those restrooms open?
Yes, they're open routinely, yes.
March Bank?
Uh, not, not March Bank, I don't think, because March Bank, the only bathrooms are associated with the clubhouse, so they're only open when the clubhouse is open.
Open the clubhouse when you use it.
Yeah. But there are bathrooms, for example, at Bexar Heights Park that are open all the time. That's one of, that's a smaller park, but for whatever reason, it was always equipped with full bathrooms. There are porta potties still at, I think, four, four parks. And the reason we didn't take them out of those parks is because they, in, in some of the smaller parks where we, we've removed them, our feeling is most of the people that go to those parks are from the neighborhood so they can go home to go to the bathroom. Whereas there are some large parks that still have porta potties in them because there's so many people go there and they drive to get there that.
What parks are those?
Um, I can't even remember them off the top of my head. Jeff, which ones are they? You know?
March Banks.
Has a porta potty?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Now we can tell.
In the middle.
In the middle, at the middle tier.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hillside, I believe. I just tried to find.
Yeah, I can't remember. Just, I think there's only four parks still.
Yeah, there are four parks.
But they're larger parks that, because people.
The priority is why the most people come from further distance.
Exactly.
They can't get home.
And can't get home to use the bathroom.
Yeah, just want my colleagues to know, you know, I happen to be here forever. You're younger, so always hold that in mind. Toilets in public parks is, is a big deal because you're at the public park, you gotta go to the bathroom, you can't get home, what are you gonna do?
Yes.
You've got people peeing and pooping in the bushes. And if you've got little kids, they're going everywhere. So that becomes a health hazard. So whenever we get more money, let's take care of that problem.
Well, one of the, one of the items though that you're, you're, no one has raised is the fact that frequently, um, when we do have porta potties out, they're vandalized.
They're vandalized, yeah.
And, and that becomes a significant cost factor to us as well, because when they get tipped over and we have to constantly be reservicing them because of the mess that's created by that, um, that's an ongoing challenge. And so it's not just the issue of it costs $10,000, because if it was just that.
Yeah.
We'd figure out a way to do, we'd figure out a way to put one in every park, but it's not just that cost. It's then the ongoing cost when they get vandalized and they get vandalized with regularity.
Do the, the actual building bathrooms do better or do they get vandalized?
All the fixed bathrooms?
Check the note because the public can't hear you.
No. I, I would say that the porta potties are vandalized more.
I think it was off.
The porta potties are vandalized more. And, and Pat is right, because what happens to us when we're actually, we actually have them out there? The, the cost to have a porta potty is actually really pretty minimal.
Mm-hmm.
It's the, the charge per porta potty is not a lot. You might, it might, it's only like $1,500 a year, it's like a little over $100 a month. The, the issue is the vandalism. If somebody comes to a porta potty, for example, and I'll, sorry, but I'll tell you, somebody might do something like throw an old coat into the toilet. Okay? They can't suck that out with the truck that comes to service it. So then what they do is they go, okay, we can't service this one. That guy that normally services it for practically nothing goes away, he calls his office, they send a special crew to come out and service it. It's a one-time stop and probably costs you as much as the monthly service for six months for that one incident. Or somebody will tip it over, which is a common problem. Or some other thing will happen to it. And so the porta potties actually, over the course of a year, the vandalism repairs and responses probably equate to what the rental is.
So we have two problems. One, we don't have enough money to provide toilets and we don't have residents that respect.
It's not even, it's not even the residents.
It's kids, isn't it? Just running around?
Not even, no, it's, it's homeless and it's, people use them to shoot up drugs and whatever.
Yeah, we had that problem up in the hillside area.
You know? Yeah. It's, it's, who knows? All you know is that they're, you know.
It's not good.
They're, they're messed up.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
Because we even, we even had, we even had someone who, who, uh, it was actually hillside, Jeff, I think that they, we removed one from. And we had a resident who was willing to pay through his company.
I remember that.
To actually maintain it. And we said, will you pay for the vandalism too? And that's when he said, no, I won't. So we didn't put it back in. He'd pay for the monthly rental, but he didn't want to pay for the vandalism repair type stuff and the special responses.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, John. That was very helpful. I have some questions. I'm gonna go through one at a time. So I've noticed a proliferation of these, um, the Lime Bikes, the scooters. And my question is, um, do we have, is there any revenue opportunities for that? And is, are we regulating, uh, how the Lime Bikes operate in the city?
If, if there are Lime Bikes in this town right now, as far as I know, they came from some other town, because I don't think we have any agreements with any of those bike companies at this moment. The Lime Bike, bikes wander all over the place, they do, which some people don't like because somebody rides it and then they just leave it wherever, which could be in the middle of a sidewalk laying on the ground. In my neighborhood out where I live, they have Lime Bikes and you see them popping up in the middle of a residential neighborhood because somebody rode it home and it might sit there for six months before another person in that neighborhood wants to take it back somewhere else. So, uh, uh, they are, they are, there are probably revenue generating opportunities and we have been approached by a few, but none, none of the companies that are doing them right now have, have pursued us very rigorously. It's, it's like they're knocking down our door to come to Daly City.
So we're not exactly a bicycle destination.
Yeah, I know that, like, some bicyclists out there, my bristle, but I can tell you from my experience with the Daly City Bicycle Committee and Bike Ped Committee and with the projects that we do and when we put in bike lanes, one of, they're usually done with grant money and we have to do follow-up, uh, surveys on how many people are using them and stuff. Daly City is not a big bike town because it's so hilly.
Yeah.
I assume. This is a pedestrian town, it really is. And so I don't know how much, uh, those bikes like Lime Bikes and stuff would actually get used in this town, because we have way more needs for pedestrian activity than we do for bikes.
So, um, with that.
That may be why they're not, excuse me, Mayor. That may be why the, the initial forays where we've been talked to never seemed to lead to anything. We, we get one call, we say, hmm, what do you think? And then you never hear from them again.
Okay.
I know, I know South San Francisco has them and they're on their second contract or the first one went belly up or some were pulled out or whatever. So they're, they're not using Lime Bikes or their, or Ford or I don't know which one it was, but they had one company and they went out and left after about a year and now they have somebody else.
So I've heard that they've reached out.
Lime Bikes actually has been pursuing us and they have actually tried to schedule a meeting with me to talk about it. I just haven't been able to meet with them, but they are anxious to, uh, be considered in Daly City. And, you know, I think for the convenience of residents, if they are interested in that, we should certainly look at that as a possibility, not necessarily as a revenue generator, because it's not a huge revenue generator, from what I understand. We actually, um, I've also talked to another group, um, several months ago and about their, um, similar bike program, but in that conversation, um, when we talked about revenue, it's not a huge amount, because they're the ones who take full responsibility for maintaining the bicycles and, and, and picking them up and that kind of thing if they're left in places where they should not be. Because that would be my concern, is that if we were to do this, we can't put the burden on Public Works, on the street staff to maintain the public right-of-way because these bikes are being placed everywhere. We just don't have the staff to be able to do that. So that was one of the concerns that I, that I raised with the first group that I met with about who's, who's responsible for these bikes once they come in. And they assured me that they're the ones who take care of everything. These are, these are different, you know, than the original bike share programs like you saw extensively in San Francisco where there were bike racks and you'd rent one of the bikes and then you could take it to another rack. These bikes have a GPS kind of system and a chip in it that you can leave them anywhere. And that's where, while it can provide a high degree of convenience for people who want to go from one place to another and maybe won't need the bike the rest, you know, the rest of the day. But the problem is, is then they then get left wherever that location is. And then, um, until someone else comes, comes by or you have to report it to the bike share company to then come up and retrieve it and put it back in a location that has been designated for, um, bike share. And if you go through South San Francisco, which I did recently, because we had a, a group of Chinese planners visiting and I took them over to South City for a presentation. The bike companies, particularly Lime Bike, they will identify locations where they will initially set up the bikes, like major intersections, things like that. But over time, the bikes end up wandering other places and being left and then.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I see them here.
Yeah.
And, but do we have a reg?
We don't have an arrangement at all. So that's what.
They could leave it and we.
They could leave it anywhere and that's the problem. And so for us, if, I haven't seen any here in Daly City, but if I did, I would call them and say, you need to retrieve your bike because we don't have an agreement with you right now for that.
Yeah, it's, they, they become just like an abandoned shopping cart.
Yeah, it pretty much is.
They do.
And even though they, the original plan is the, the company will work with the city to identify major areas where they think that there would be a high, you know, need for bicycles and then they'll establish that as a location. But then, like I said, over time, they meander off into other areas of the city and get left. And, and some people may use them, pick them up and take them somewhere else, or they may stay there for a long time and nobody will use them. So, um, in conjunction with these kinds of programs, you got to have an extensive public outreach so that the public knows about the bikes, knows how they can set up an account to use the bikes, you know, and that kind of thing. And then you're going to get people who then know if they see a bike, you know, in a particular location, that that's available for them to use and that kind of thing. So we, you know, we certainly can look to it, but it's not a revenue generator, not, you know, you'll get minimal amount of revenue.
Would, would they be able to, these companies, whether it's Lime Bike or another company, be able to, uh, get an analysis of how many would utilize it, you know, whether, you know, with their, um, staff or whatnot to find out kind of the need or whatnot? Would they be able to provide that so that we know?
That, no, not that I'm aware of. The, the company that I met with bef, initially, which is not Lime Bike, but it's the same kind of operation, there's no way for them to know how many people will use it. And, and part of it is the marketing of it. You know, it's the marketing of it, uh, both on their part as well as the city to say, hey, we've got this new mode of transportation. If you're interested, here's how you can sign up to, to use these bikes. But they don't have any data because they have no basis for generating data about how many people would ride bikes and that kind of thing. Over time, over time, they will be able to develop data that shows how many people are using it, what neighborhoods seem to be using it more often and that kind of thing. But initially, they would, you know, be in a position where they'd have to pretty much put bikes out in pretty much every quadrant of the city to then see where they are actually being utilized.
I think if they are able to, um, work with BART stations, particularly if that's, I don't know, that would.
Well, that's a different issue. They have to work with BART on that.
No, I'm saying if they were to, for instance, were able to work with Daly City BART, I'm saying for, if they were to, I can see how that would be beneficial for many of our residents that do take public transportation and then maybe it is, they just have to head over half a mile or up the hill, because even though they are bicycles that are manual, those also have the electric portion of it. So if they're going up top of the hill, they could actually go up top of the hill. But I'm just saying.
Well, not all of the bikes are electric. Some, some operators do provide electric bikes, but the Lime Bike, as far as I, I know, is just a regular.
They do, they do electric.
Okay, well, the ones in South City are not electric, because.
Oh, Breed has the, the new, or is it called Breed, I think? Is the new, um, Bird.
Bird, yeah.
Those are.
Yeah, so there are companies that specialize in the electric ones, but Lime Bike, as far as I'm aware, they are only pedling bikes.
They have both now. I think they've, but I mean, as, as they come across, I think, you know, they now have electric, some don't, but it's a possibility for our residents, as you mentioned, Ms. Martell, that it's, you know, around the usage that our residents may be able to utilize for their convenience and getting home. So, thank you for bringing that up, Vice Mayor.
And then speaking of, of BART, um, so I, I, I was interested in knowing how much interaction we are having with BART with respect to, you know, that tunnel, um, it's just still a mess. I mean, it smells like urine, it's, it's kind of creepy at night and.
And no woman I know will ever use that tunnel.
Yeah, it's, it's a bad.
Day or night.
Yeah. Are, are, are we, are you, are they reaching out? Do we have any kind of say in how that thing gets set up? And is there anything done, as far as you know, to improve it?
BART has not contacted us about that tunnel for a long time.
Quite a long time, since they first decided to look at some potential improvements for the overall BART station, and that was actually several years ago. We did address it with them at the time and told them that we thought it needed more lighting, it needed to be cleaned regularly.
And neighbors came out for that too.
For people to use it, right, for people to use it, because particularly at night, it's kind of dark down there and they do have lights, but it's not real bright and people are afraid to go down there. And it's just, maintenance-wise, it's not maintained very well. So we have requested that of BART, um, but they have not made any real significant investment in the Daly City BART station as of this date. So that's not one of the things that.
So the talk that they had about developing some areas there, that's.
Well, it hasn't happened yet. It doesn't mean that it won't happen.
Yeah.
Um, you know, it could. And I know that, you know, um, BART is looking at every opportunity to, um, raise revenue for, you know, their operations, which includes building transit-oriented housing at each of their BART stations, excuse me, um, and that kind of thing. So they are taking a look at all of the stations in their, in their service system for opportunities, but they're looking for opportunities to generate revenue, not necessarily to expend revenue. So, but we certainly can bring it to their attention that it needs maintenance.
Yeah. Um, so the other issue is, I was looking up, actually, I looked at that site, the TripAdvisor and I, and I saw what are sort of the top things people do in Daly City. And one of the ones is actually the, the paragliding, um, hang gliding spot that they have up there.
In Fort Frontston.
And I'm wondering what, um... And I'm wondering, what, do we have any say over, or are we involved in the maintenance, the regulation, and, and basically the business of paragliding up there? Is Daly City about-
Are you talking about Fort Funston?
No, no.
No.
It's, it's, it's not so much hang gliding, it's parasailing, the ones where they have parachute-like things.
Uh-huh. Where is that location?
Muscle Rock. They do it regularly.
Ah, okay, gotcha.
And they just have a backpack on their back, and they go out there and then furlough like a parachute. Because the way the wind is and stuff at Muscle Rock, it's an excellent site, and people paraglide out.
It's got an uplift, an updraft.
Yeah, just lift them up and they take off. Matter of fact, on this weekend, I was with a guy that's a hang glider instructor and does paragliding, parasailing, whatever they call it. And he's been to Muscle Rock before. But basically, it's, we're not doing anything to regulate it at all. The, they're just going out into the open space and unfurling their, their parachute, and boom, they're off. If you, if we want, actually, Muscle Rock is an extremely popular place, especially when there's whale washing or whatever. And one of the things, if you wanted to look at it from a standpoint of trying to maybe develop a little revenue or whatever, the suggestion that's been brought up to me by several of my staff is, we should be charging for parking out there. There's many beach parking lots up and down the coast and Pacific and other places where you have to pay to park. You know, we don't, we just let people park out there. And, you know, basically, Muscle Rock is free and open to the public. But if, if you really wanted to look at something, it probably wouldn't be to regulate a user with their individual thing, it would be to charge them for parking there.
So the thought that came to mind was, you know, we have the Mavericks tournament in Daly City, Tascadero, I don't know. So I was trying to research if there is ever a paragliding tournament also that perhaps could put Daly City on the map. I just, I've seen lately, it seems like there's so many paragliders out there, and it seems to be a, a thing that people are enjoying. But if it's, if it's possible, we could somehow generate some revenue? I mean, I think we should look into it.
One of the things I think that would be a prime consideration, and the city attorney's not here right now, is the fact that if we sponsor something like that, we have some liability in it. Right now, the people who, who paraglide or hang glide in that area do so at their own risk. And while we have many times over the years, that I'm aware, have had to rescue people who have not been able to successfully descend from their flights, and we, we do provide, you know, that emergency rescue service. But once you take on sponsorship for something like that, there is liability. And that is a huge liability to have people taking off and landing in those locations.
Yeah, I was thinking more of a, of a private sponsorship like they do with tournaments. Like the Lake Merced, they have their own organization who sponsored that tournament. And the Mavericks, I think it's the same way. They have their, they put it out to, you know, bid, and whoever came up with the opportunity that made sense. So I, I mean, I'm just thinking, and I'd like to see us try to think of more creative ways to try to generate some revenue and get the people to come to Daly City. So the other, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, that's probably what you would, you'd be looking for. It's like, we're not trying to make money on necessarily the event itself, but it would publicize Daly City. If we broke even, we'd feel happy, because the event itself would maybe generate interest in Daly City and tax revenue for other things and other businesses or whatever.
Yeah, 'cause I don't think any of those kind of contests, they're lucky if they break even.
Mm-hmm.
But it's associated stuff.
I had a question on, on iHelp. Obviously, I think it's a great app, but do we have an updated version, or are we going through a, a second generation, if you will, kind of, program?
No, we're not at this time. In fact, iHelp came from a company called Public Stuff. If you, if you look up, if you want actually, for Daly City, you can look up iHelp. But if you just want to report something in another city that is, and you can use the Public Stuff, it's a company called Public Stuff. Unfortunately, Public Stuff, just like a lot of other software companies, got picked up by somebody who's bigger, right? And you don't know whether they bought them because they thought it was a great thing and they could be expanded, or they're just trying to poach their employees, who knows? But a much bigger company called Exella bought Public Stuff, and so our, our software provider is now a completely different company. And it, I don't think that the product is even as good as the day we got it, although I don't think it's visible to the public who uses it. I think for staff who are in the background trying to use it, it's not as friendly as it used to be. For like, if we're trying to do a data search and find information about where a particular customer's had a lot of problems or something like that, or we're trying to look up hotspots for illegal dumping stuff, it's a lot harder and clunkier to search the database than it used to be, at least in my perspective. But we're, we haven't been looking for a new product at this time. But the company that we got our asset management system from, Lucity, they do have a similar kind of product, but we haven't bought into that yet, because we, we have Public Stuff and we want to get the rest of Lucity's stuff up and running. But it's very possible that we would want to switch over from using the Public Stuff iHelp system and switch over to just use another application within the Lucity asset management system, because it has an application where somebody can make a request to fill a PACO, and it automatically writes the work request in our asset management system. So, so it's something that we've got kind of in the back of our minds, that once Lucity gets up and completely running a hundred percent, and that we might want to convert over to Lucity from iHelp.
Okay.
But I agree with you. I think iHelp is the greatest thing since sliced bread. That thing works great.
So the final question I had is, I get this complaint all the time. It has to do with the intersection in, on John Daly and by the Boulevard Capitol.
Yes.
So what can you tell us about that?
That, we get that complaint constantly.
What's the problem there?
It, there's too many roads too close together. And the only way-
I drive it all the time, but maybe because I've been driving it for, you know, forty years.
It is confusing for people who are not local. I mean, if you go through it all the time and you understand how it works and stuff, it's not so confusing. But the South Mesa Fair side, where it comes up and essentially tees into Poncetta, right there in front of the 76 gas station, probably the only way you could really legitimately fix that intersection would be to close that. And that would be huge. The guy at the 76 would freak. You'd probably be paying him for lost business revenue and God knows what else. Most of Poncetta, only the very beginning of it is actually a public road. As soon as you get past the 76 gas station, it's all private, it's all apartment property. So if you really wanted to close it, you'd probably have to figure out some way to try to build a cul-de-sac, which would mean a giant right-of-way taking potentially. So without spending a lot of money, that intersection's about as good as it'll run. We had, and part of the problem is, is that the South Mesa Fair leg is so close to John Daly in that parallel configuration, that it's controlled by a light. And so when somebody's leaving, they're going east, and then they turn and they're going north.
And they see the light, yeah.
You don't want them to be, and they still become confused, you don't want them to see a bunch of more lights that are, because the people that are coming straight down Poncetta, they're seeing a red. So if you have another street signal light out there, it'll show red. So somebody will come out on a green, turn the corner, and they're, and they're immediately looking at a red light. So there used to be red lights across the street, there used to be more signal hits. It was even more confusing. And those were taken out like a dozen years ago, because they, they made it worse. So we have looked at this over and over and over again, me and the traffic engineer Shirley Chan, and without closing a leg of that intersection, which may not be a bad thing, I mean, there may be residents who might think it's good. I know the 76 gas station won't think it's good. But there might be residents who live on that street that wouldn't have a problem with it all. It, it's very, very difficult to do anything about it. It's just the configuration of the roads that make it so that the traffic signal systems can just be so good, and then there's no perfect solution out there.
Okay, thank you.
I, I wish I could fix it, because we get complaints all the time, and I don't, I don't, I mean, I think I've gotten there and went, "Wait a minute, is it green or not?" You know?
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? I have two questions. I wanted to know, you talked about the city's fleet of 278 vehicles, and how many of them are eco-friendly or electric?
I don't believe we have any truly electric. We have, we do have hybrids.
Hybrids.
And the, the, we just haven't gone into electric area yet. They're typically more expensive in the long, because most of them nowadays, they actually have gasoline backup. So you, you're buying more, more equipment inside that car. And even with the hybrids, the additional cost of battery operator, battery-assisted cars typically can't be paid for with the fuel savings and things like that, because we don't put enough miles on most of our cars. A lot of times, we're just going very short distances, which means that electric would actually be pretty good. But because they're more expensive, we haven't gone in that direction, just because money reasons more than anything. And we would have to start investing into some charging stations and things like that, which we also haven't done.
Thank you. And then you said that you started providing fire truck maintenance for the city of Brisbane, so I'm assuming we get reimbursed for that?
Yes, we have an agreement where we actually add a markup on, because of our computer system at the garage and our own maintenance on, on the fire engines, we know pretty well exactly what our costs are gonna be. And we have an agreement that, that, they actually have a cap on it, that where they don't want to spend more than $60,000 a year on their vehicle maintenance. I'm sure if we ever hit the cap, that we'd go, "Well, your fire truck's gonna be down if you don't pay for this next repair," because, but yes, we're compensated, I would say, at, at least cost recovery, because we do add an administrative overhead for just handling the billing and all that jazz. And we bill them about monthly, because they, they have routinely gasoline from us for their fire engines by fueling up at, at some of our firehouses and things like that. So we've always had a, a, basically, we bill them for the fuel they take. Now we bill them for the oil changes and the brake jobs and everything else. But we're not losing any money on it, that's for sure.
Okay, thank you.
We made absolutely sure of that.
Thank you.
That made it clear. We're not subsidizing anybody.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you for your presentation.
Okay. Okay. Thanks. There's a separate presentation on the CIP, the Capital Improvement Program, and that will actually be a tandem deal between me and the Water Waste Water Department. So I will explain the CIP budget and its differences from the operating budget. I will give you some highlights of things that were completed and things that we're gonna plan for the coming year. And some of that will be a little bit repetitive to some of the stuff, because we work on those projects, and I've taken credit for them, because our engineers work on with our operating budget. But I'll pass it off to Tom Pecalotti, Water Waste Water Director, to do the water and sewer sections of the CIP. Basically, basically, the CIP is a multi-year project identification and funding plan. And the CIP is used to coordinate the financing and timing of major public improvements. The CIP identifies each proposed project and presents a summary description, estimate of cost, method of financing, and a schedule for completion. The first two years of the CIP is actually what you adopt. The following years, there's about six or eight of them in the, in the long-term plan, are our best guesses about what's gonna happen in the future. And you might even see, this isn't, this is just the actual funding summary, which I think is the top sheet of the handout you got, that in some cases, you'll see negative numbers out in the farther years, which, that just means that, okay, as those years get closer, we have to modify our spending plan, or we have to look for more revenue or something to get rid of those negatives. The CIP, unlike the operating budget, that lasts only one year and then it's gone, and then you adopt another one. The CIP is basically like a constant program. You adopt new projects, those projects carry over sometimes for multiple years, and so the budgets have to exist for multiple years. Unlike operating budgets, they live and die on a one-year cycle. And sometimes you're, you have to accumulate money for multiple years on some of these projects before you can actually undertake them. The decision to fund any individual, any individual project is-
Do you have the other presentation?
Sorry.
You can keep that handy, but, I've got my PowerPoint still on the P Drive. I'm not seeing what I'm expecting to see.
There's a copy in the DWR file, P Drive.
I'm not seeing the right, the right folders even.
Go back to P, P Drive. Okay, go into DWR.
Just a couple of, there it is. CPW, CPW, a little over there, there you go. There you go. CIP right at the top, not, no, wait a minute, there's, that's not the right one, that's a draft. It's probably the one right below it. Can you expand the title? Oops. Okay, pull it out.
I think they're gonna do the water on my street in the next few years.
Yeah, it's the top one, it's the one that says, "Final, final." There you go. That's it. Okay, now this looks like what you should have, too. At least is what I'm looking at. Okay, so the criteria used for prioritizing these major capital projects is, is there a council or community priority for the project? Are there dedicated funds available for the project, like GASTAC versus general fund? Is there an economic benefit to the project? Is, is, will the project create some kind of efficiency and overall operational savings? Is, is the general plan, or is there some impact mitigation related to a development that would require, that would require the project? Is it legally mandated for some reason? Or is it, most of ours are, or a large part of them are to preserve our assets. There are things like major roof replacements and HVAC replacements and stuff to maintain our city buildings. Or they may be required for safety reasons. Some of the projects that were completed in the recent, in this year was the Muscle Rock seawall, police locker room, the Geller Park soccer field, a turf replacement in the last two-year cycle. We did the elevator project, access and amenities plan, we did the facilities condition assessment. These are just a couple of them. There's a lot more of them. We, we spent about 17, 18 million dollars in the last two years on non-utility capital projects. Projects that are coming up in the new, new CIP, if it's adopted, the way it's drafted, is to re-roof the Dolger Senior Center.
That's gonna be expensive.
Yes, it won't be cheap. These are the, I told you, some of the, some of the emergency generators are actually already in process to be replaced, and then these are the two new ones that are coming up, 91 and 90. They got the numbers wrong. It's two new ones are coming up and one's already in process. But will get finished in the same two-year cycle. Police Training Room and Operations Center remodel, this is where they're gonna reutilize the area that used to be the old dispatch area. They're gonna remodel that area, and this is one of those situations where there's essentially dedicated funding. They're gonna use asset forfeiture funds to pay for that remodel. Altaloma Park, we already talked about that. Again, that's, that's a grant-funded project or substantial grant funding on that project. The, we're gonna be doing tennis court and basketball court resurfacing within the next two-year cycle.
Is that across the city? Or any particular location?
It, it will probably be all of them. This project is, to some degree, waiting for the park master plan to get completed, because there could be desires on the part of the public to change some of the stuff. People want tennis courts. We got an iHelp invite just the other day saying that they don't like the surfaces, they want to get resurfaced, they want us to bring back night lighting of a- They want us to bring back night lighting or have you. And we want to get the public's opinion on that, because we do have Parkland Dedication money to spend. But we don't make, we don't have an unlimited amount of money, so we want to make sure that it gets spent on the, on the highest priority for the public. So for example, I just use this as an example, there are some cities that pickleball has become super popular. I don't even know what pickleball is, to tell you the truth, but you played on a court, just like a tennis court. And I know in the community where I live out in Concord, they actually converted some of their tennis courts to pickleball courts. So when these got resurfaced, there's, there's a chance that we might resurface one or two of them and restrike them separately for pickleball instead of tennis. Who knows? But that's the kind of thing we want to get out of our park master plan, is to find out if there's a need for tennis versus pickleball versus whatever. We're also going to re-roof the Westlake Community Center and Jim. And obviously, we're going to be doing the park master plan. And again, I think I told you, a lot of our general fund and some of our park stuff is all about maintaining our, the assets we already have. But those two roof jobs are both going to be expensive. The, the one at the Dozer Senior Center might be half a million dollars. Transportation projects that we completed were the John Daly Street Skate Project, Callan Boulevard Traffic Ceremony by the mall. Got activated just this week, I think it was last week. So that's up and running now. We did the Geon Avenue Bike Ped stuff. A lot of this, like I said, is repetitive. We did annual series seal. We did traffic signal painting, street paving on Yepesera and Geneva. Upcoming transportation projects would be our, it's almost an annual, but it's more like every eighteen months, we, we get a major street resurfacing project. We have one, one under design right now that'll get finished in the next two-year cycle. We are proposing to do a project very similar to what we did on John Daly Boulevard, on the islands on Ceramati Boulevard next to the mall. Where right now, there are mostly weeds and, and old bottle brush and, and what is it, ice plant? It's been there for God knows how long. Would be to re-landscape those with a bio-swell type treatment, just like we did on John Daly Boulevard. And the reason we can do that is because we have this extra SB1 money, which because our streets are in really good shape pavement-wise, we can spend it on other things within the street right away. The city is going to be required to do green infrastructure projects as part of our Regional Water Quality Control Board mandates on, on reducing the amount of mercury and PCB that goes to the bay. And so they want us to install projects that will, will pre-filter drainage water, like bio swells. And the, the, the thing that's nice about a project like that is that it's kind of a twofer for us. We can beautify the street and meet the green infrastructure mandates of the Regional Water Quality Control Board at the same time. And lucky for us, we have new money to actually pay for it. So it's, it's like a win-win-win all the way around. We'll be doing ADA ramp installations on a routine basis like we usually do. Again, that's a, that's an annual to, to biannual type of a project. We're going to be doing an ADA self-evaluation project in the first fiscal, first year of the two-year cycle budget, CIP capital plan, and then hire a consultant to do a full redo of our transition plan. All cities had to do an ADA transition plan back in the late nineteen nineties when ADA was originally adopted. But there's a minority of cities that have updated those plans over the twenty-plus years since then. And we're not unique in that respect at all. I can tell that, because I've worked for multiple cities. And I don't think any of them had an updated ADA transition plan. But they do go outdated, because you build new facilities, tear down old ones, you put in some of the improvements, and then they change the regulations and they have to be redone again and what have you. And so it's really past time that we redo our transition plan. And so we're going to try to get that done during the next two-year cycle. We'll be doing two more slurry seal projects in the St. Francis and Crocker neighborhoods. We'll do again, more semi-annual traffic signal painting. We have to do some work down in Avalon Canyon, as I, I think some of you have been on the council long enough or have been along up in Daly City. You know that there was a huge landslide there about fifteen years ago. And the city had to do a lot of work out there to stabilize those slopes. And there are siltation basins, and there's an access road that goes all the way to the bottom of, of Avalon Canyon. And the siltation basins need to be emptied of silt accumulation, so that they continue to function the way they're supposed to. And the access road is actually being destroyed at the bottom by a small landslide within a slide. There's a small landslide identified that actually underlies the access road at the bottom. And a combination of wave action and that small landslide are basically torn the end of the road off. And so to continue to have decent access down to the bottom of Avalon Canyon, where the detention basins are, and it also provides a primary access point for DWR to get down to the out, the south side of the Fort Funston outfall from the Suits Room Plant, we need to repair that area down there. We're working on the Bike Ped Master Plan, and we're considering doing actually a series circuit, street light conversion to parallel, so that we can get rid of one of the RO streetlight circuits. The RO street, there is a very small street, RO streetlight circuit that surrounds Westlake Shopping Center. And because it's small, because it borders commercial property that has their own parking lot, lighting and what have you, it, it's, it's one of the ROs that we can probably both afford to with some of our new money and logistically pull off in terms of converting it, so that it no longer is an RO circuit. And now I'll transition to Tom Picalotti to talk to you about the Water Waste Water part of the Capital Improvement Program projects. But if you have any questions, I mean, for it.
I do have some questions.
Okay.
For instance, in the general CIP fund, you mentioned that the Dozer Senior Center roof is one of the top priorities. It's one of the top priorities because of...
It leaks.
It leaks. And I've heard that from...
Yeah. And it, and it causes, every time it leaks, it can, it can cause problems, mold, dry rot, whatever in the building. So we're probably going to have some of those kinds of repairs that we'll be doing at the same time, which you don't know until you start ripping a roof off and see how, how bad the underlying damage is.
No, I'm glad that you have that under priority, because I have spoken to some seniors that utilize it. And they, they've mentioned how it leaks during the rainy season, and they're just trying to, like, do what they can. But for instance, the, or maybe this is a question for you or the city manager. The general CIP fund, how, how is it, what's the resources that go into the CIP fund?
So there are a variety of sources that is actually part of this presentation, but it's partially general fund dollars. We have transportation dollars. We have funds from the water fund and sanitation fund for those projects. So it depends on what the project is. The roof for the Dozer Senior Center would be a general fund project.
Meaning from a general CIP fund or from our general budget?
From the general fund budget.
Got it. Okay. So I am trying to see if there's a way that we can augment that, and I'm working on that. And so I just wanted to know where the, the funds were coming from for general fund.
It's a general fund item.
I'm hoping that we would get some support and dollars, so that it, you know, we can use the other funds otherwise. So just want to let you know that. I'm trying to get some resources for that, especially since our seniors utilize that very heavily. Thanks, Mayor.
I have a question about the...
Can you pass those documents down? Thanks.
With respect to the vehicles that we use?
Thank you.
And what your philosophy is on, on buying versus leasing vehicles? And how, how do you, how long do you hold on to them? And when you do get rid of them, is it reflected on the budget in terms of, are we reselling them? Are we just donating them, that kind of thing?
Okay. Firstly, it's buying and selling. We buy them regularly. For example, police cars are one of our best customers. We have to buy half a dozen of them almost every year, because they're used night and day. One guy gets out and another guy gets them and things back on the road. They, they'll rack up a hundred thousand miles in a year, even in this little town, because they're constantly being driven around. And when a police car, for example, is taken out of service, because it's just got too high a mileage, the outfitting, you know, the, the cage for the bad guy and the light bars and all that kind of stuff on them. When it's equal vehicle to equal vehicle, we'll, we'll save all that stuff and just take it off one and put it on the new one. In the last couple of years, they stopped making Crown Victoria, which was the flagship of almost all police forces in the United States. And most police forces have now either switched over to the Ford Police Interceptor, or some cities are also using Dodge Chargers. But a real common one you see is the SUV style. You see H, CHP driving and we drive them. And they're much more expensive to outfit, because everything's new the first time around. Because you can't take something off an old car and put it on there. But once you get them outfitted, as long as we keep buying that same basic type of SUV Police Interceptor, we can continue to use all that outfitting equipment over again. The radios, the computers, all that stuff just gets pulled out of one and put into another one. And we do send them to auction. But typically, our vehicles are so worn by the time we get rid of them, that we don't get a lot of money at auction. The kinds of money that we get at auction is if, if we get $3,000 for a vehicle, that's huge. That's not true for big expensive vehicles. I mean, we might have a VACcon that's wore out for us, and it costs us $300,000 to buy it. Even at auction, we might still get thirty, which is enough to buy a police car. But, but it's way short to try to buy another VACcon. So we do send them all to auction. So we try to get the maximum we can on resale. And we put them all out to bid and we buy them. So we, we get them as cheap as we can and we, and we get the highest price we can on resale for them. As far as leasing goes, we typically don't lease, because it's, if we can afford, well, we haven't leased anything, I don't think, since I've been here. And most of the cities where I've worked don't lease. The only reason being is leasing is typically, the leases are set up, so they're just like when you buy a car on time. You're going to pay some, some of what you're going to, you're going to pay is borrowing the money, because you're not paying the car off in a lump sum. So for example, the Fire Department has been discussing with us potentially leasing a couple of fire trucks rather than trying to buy them outright. And if, if the lease plan, there's, there's different ways they're set up, the lease plans. But the, the one we prefer is one where, once the lease is paid off, we own the vehicle. And typically, what would happen with one of those leases like that is you might pay the lease off in ten years. And the vehicle would be ten years old when you got it, but we keep fire trucks longer than that. Most of our fire trucks, we keep fifteen, twenty years. So we would own it and not be paying on the lease anymore. But we would probably pay about ten percent more through the lease process than we would if we could afford to buy it outright. But if you can't afford to buy it outright, then leasing is, is an alternative. We're not opposed to it, but if, if we can, a hook or crook, if we can come up with the money and, and buy it outright, it's cheaper. Just like if you buy a car cash versus buying it on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally. This is on CIP?
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I was waiting for this moment.
If you're going to refer to that, Lawrence, can you bring this back up? Because it's not in there.
Well, just as long as you have a copy. I saw it earlier.
I do. Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay. I just had a few questions. I'm concerned about SB1.
Yeah.
It's very, how you say it, aggressive in your plans to use the money?
Yes.
But we do realize that it's on appeal right now, and...
That's true.
And we may lose it. We may.
We may.
Okay. Good. All right.
I hope to God that doesn't happen.
I got you. I looked at your order and your future in spending SB funds. And is this based upon priority of how the money will be spent?
Yes.
Like I see St. Francis Heights Street Slurry Seal, tentatively in 2018.
Yes.
Okay.
They're, they're designing that one right now. That one is basically the, the Slurry Seal project.
Yes.
Because basically, the city is divided into seven zones, and, and we do one zone every year. And so it's St. Francis turning the bucket again coming up. And we just did, what was it, Crocker and Westlake?
Okay, so, excuse me. So we're utilizing SB funding to, I guess, Slurry Seal came under gas taxes before, under that category. So now we're going to take advantage of SB1, so hopefully, we can do more with the gas tax and the allocation of funds.
That's what we do. Actually, this is a good example. If, if you, I know this thing is really small. It's hard to stand. I'm sure it's...
What page do you want?
First page.
First page. First page. If you look right at the top of the first page, on, it says transportation. We routinely talk about the transportation funds as gas tax, but it's not just all gas tax.
Got you.
We get traditional old-school gas tax, the same kind of gas tax that the state's been collecting since I was a kid and worked at a gas station. We get Measure A sales tax money for, for road and transportation-related projects in this county. We also get Measure M money, which comes from vehicle registrations that are done within this county. And now we're getting SB1. It's called RMA, because it's Road Maintenance and Repair Account. But we put all of those in the, in the, in the, under the umbrella of gas tax.
Got you.
The old traditional, the old-school traditional gas tax has always funded the actual maintenance operation. The people who work on putting up the signs and maintaining the traffic signals and filling the potholes as few as we have, but repainting the stripes on the street and the red curbs and whatever, their salaries are all paid out of the old traditional gas tax. So the money that's available for major projects like Slurry Seal and overlays and stuff like that, used to be the Measure A sales tax. But now we have almost the same amount we used to get from Measure A. We get it again in SB1. And that's huge for us, because it's the thing that will allow us to do those projects. I told you about green infrastructure. And it will also allow us to potentially do an RO conversion. If we lost it, we'd still do the Slurry Seal job. We wouldn't be able to do those other...
That's my concern. Yes.
Projects.
Well, I have to...
And it's SB1 money that's still paying for the pavement, but it frees up the Measure A money now to do those other projects.
I have to commend you, because to separate these into specific accounts, so that it can be used specifically for that intended purpose, that's outstanding, rather than co-mingling and putting it all into one. Because a lot of folks may ask the question, "Well, why can't we move this money and say," I've asked it before, "move, put it in the general fund?"
Yeah.
But you can't do that, because there are certain requirements based upon getting the funds.
Right.
I've come a long way.
And actually, it does happen, but it only happens when that engineer, that's in engineering, whose check is actually being paid out at the general fund, is working on a transportation project, then we can repay the general fund.
Got you. All right. I'm getting different figures, because this SB funding is based upon, I guess, the population, Daly City. And I'm showing Daly City to be getting, in 2017 to 2018, three million and forty-nine, three million forty-nine thousand in funds. Go ahead.
I'm not sure where you're getting your numbers from, because it shouldn't be that high. But when the state puts out their stuff now, they, they put the SB1 money on the same page and spreadsheet as they do all the old traditional gas tax. The SB1 money, the way I understand it, is the first year we get it, because it, not all of the different provisions go into effect immediately. And it went into the effect in the middle of the fiscal year. So the first fiscal year, we get someplace between 650 and 800,000 dollars.
Oh, okay. All right.
Then it ramps up to about 1.4, and then it goes up to about 2.3.
All right, Mr. Fuller. I got it.
Okay.
I, I guess you're right. The, the 2,300,000 is coming from HUTA.
That's the HUDA fund. That's the old one.
Okay.
Yeah.
But the SB1 is 623,000, and you're showing 615,000 dollars.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I, I know exactly what you're looking at, because I had to look at that for a while, too.
All right. All right. Okay. Because, again, Daly City, we need to get out just here. And comparing this with all the other cities, we're one of the highest cities that's getting money, and to use this money is great.
Yeah. In this county, we probably get as much as anybody.
We should get the most.
Well, it's also based on road miles, because they... Well, it's also based on road miles because Daly City is kind of small. It kind of mitigates the fact that we have the highest population.
All right. So I gather from the presentation, we have been taking money from, some money from the general fund because I'm concerned about, we've heard recently about deferred maintenance that's coming up.
Absolutely. If you, if you look at the overall projects that we have programmed, it, again, this is one of those things where it's really tiny print.
Does it take into a consideration of deferred maintenance items that we've heard about in the CIP?
For example, those two roofs. Those are deferred because they've been leaking.
Okay. All right.
You know, they've been leaking.
Well, now that you made mention about the roof, I see there's 975,000 for the Doger Senior Center. And there's an additional 450,000 for the Doger Art Center.
These are...
So that's 1.3 million.
Just for roofs.
Just for roofs. Now, Ms. Martel, you know, I made mention that I was hoping that we can do a feasibility study to maybe modify and redo the whole complete Doger area to, and maybe we can save money.
Well, you know...
That's going to take time, though.
Yeah, well, you know, it's along the lines of the comments I made over the last few days as we've been reviewing the budget. And that is, when we look at asset management, we look at all of our facilities. You know, we want to continue to invest money on those facilities that are actually a true asset for us, that they're producing something for us, either in revenue generation or in productivity because of the programs and service delivery that we are able to provide at that facility and that kind of thing.
Which just led me to another question that comes right after that. Okay?
So, so one of the issues that I have raised over time is the amount of money that potentially we would expend on facilities that basically have outlived their useful life. And there is a useful life for facilities. You can keep putting money into things, but eventually they wear out and you are spending good money after bad in order to maintain those facilities. The Doger Senior Center is one of them. We do a great job of putting Band-Aids on the Doger Senior Center to keep it going. But it has long outlived its useful life. And to spend as much as we have identified in the budget, you know, over a million dollars to put roofs on buildings that basically have outlived their useful life is not prudent financial management. Truly is not. The question then becomes, how do we accumulate the funds necessary to do what you have talked about and what other council members have talked about and envisioned? Clearly, a feasibility study is, can be conducted. We know we can build it. The question is, how did, the feasibility comes in, how do we raise the funds to build it? Okay, we know we can, we can design it. We can put it out to bid. We can get it built. The question is how we pay for it.
Got you.
That, that's the big issue. And so in some respects, you know, there will be options available to the council going forward to look at your assets and the potential for selling certain properties that you then accumulate funds that you can set aside to build the fund necessary to then at least generate as much revenue as you can in the city and then potentially go to the public for a bond to fund the remainder of that. And whether it's for combined new Doger Senior Center, Westlake Library, whether it's for a new Ceremony Library and Community Center to replace the Geller Clubhouse, which is also badly in need of replacement.
Performing arts office.
Or incorporating a performing arts facility within one of those developments. Because you're not going to be able to build that at 200 North Gate, which is where the Westlake School for Performing Arts currently conducts their classes. That's not going to be a location in the middle of a residential neighborhood. But potentially, selling that asset for residential development would then generate revenue that you could set aside for building that combined community center. So, you know, there's a lot of possibilities to look at what opportunities that the city has with land that you would want to reuse for the purpose of building a new senior center, community center, performing arts center, library, whatever it is, or any combination of that. But in part, I really do believe that the city does have some opportunities and that was borne out. If you read in detail, as we have, the facilities assessment that was done, there are opportunities to surplus some of the facilities that are sorely underutilized and that we're spending money needlessly to maintain them. And that money could then be used to support the development of other facilities.
I agree. I like the foresight and I think I'm kind of aligned with that. Asset management is definitely a concern. And I know at one of the meetings, and I'm sure this is forthcoming, where we're going to look at our properties and determine what it brings in for us versus what we are spending to maintain it. I see, and what I said I was going to allude to later on, 2019, you have a project for Lawson Hall. And that was quite, quite a bit of money. I think that was, I lost the page.
It's about 230,000, something like that.
Right. And being armed with the information as to what it brings in as opposed to, I mean, the revenue, if any, and what we're paying, that might be, we'd have to make a tough decision and a prudent decision on deciding so that we can gain additional money so that we can move forward.
Lawson Hall is actually a perfect example.
Yes.
In that the revenue that we saw from recreation leasing that space out is about $40,000 a year.
Forty thousand.
Which doesn't sound too bad. You're saying, well, in eight years, you can do the work we're going to do with that money or whatever. But that $40,000 also has to pay for the janitor who cleans the bathroom. And, you know, pays for the, for any other on, any other staffing needs during the ongoing year. So if there's somebody who has to be there to unlock the thing or staff it while it's being used for some rental event, what have you.
To make sure it's put out.
We haven't put that information together yet. But I would bet you that probably the ongoing expense of that building is $40,000. There is nothing left for these major capital coming out of that building.
Thank you. Well, I just wanted to make those comments and kind of express some ideas. And those ideas can only come about if you're familiar and understand what it is that you have in front of you. Thank you.
So maybe we'll make a decision about Lawson Hall before we spend that 200,000 dollars.
Absolutely. I mean, we only have so many buildings we can even consider like Lawson Hall that we might want to dispose of because the land it sits on is worth more than the structure.
Yeah.
And so, but there's only about five of those buildings that we own. Most of the rest of them are either occupied by a city function or they reside on, in the side of a park or whatever. We can't sell Ceremony Library. You could sell Westlake Library and relocate it to a new facility in Westlake Park. So it's still in the same part of town.
And there'd be parking.
Exactly. You know, I mean, some people wouldn't like it because they come from the community right around it. You walk to the library. But, but if you wanted a new library, it might have to be at Westlake Park. As some kind of a combined facility that might have, you know, leisure, it could be a corner, the, you know, the same building that has the Senior Citizen Center, if you didn't see Centers there. And that's a building also because it's in a commercial mall-type area. It might have higher resale value or more interest by people who could turn it into a commercial establishment. Lawson Hall, that site would probably be sold for residential development, that kind of thing.
It's a pretty small lot, yeah.
Yeah, but you could probably get two or three units.
Oh, yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
But one last thing I'd like to tell you, too, about this stuff. Just like the gas tax account, I mean, this, the umbrella of gas tax includes Measure M, Measure A, SB 1, traditional HUDA gas tax. When you see something listed under general fund, that doesn't mean it's necessarily paid for with the general fund. It's, there's a lot of other funding sources. Impact fees from developers, the asset forfeiture funds and all of those. We put them under the umbrella of general even though they're not. They're not general the way general is. General can pay for anything. It can be moved around and you can do anything you want with it. Even though they're in the, under the general fund umbrella there, that's just a place to kind of subgroup them. There are dedicated funds like asset forfeiture in that that can only be used for police, for example.
Okay, the mayor had to step out for a few minutes, so she asked me to continue with the meeting. Is it Mr. Pecalotti's up?
Yes. Yes, he is.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Good evening.
Council members, good evening. As soon as we get the presentation pulled back up, I will be happy to start while I'm waiting. I have with me my staff here tonight. Ken Alessandro, Distribution System. Greg Kraus, Chief of Operations. Kevin McCarthy, Collection System. And Joshua Cosgrove, Plant and Equipment Maintenance. So...
What was the name? You said Greg Corales?
Greg Kraus, Chief of Operations at the Treatment Plant. Okay, great. Okay, what you see here is a map, the overview of the sewer system, just real brief. I think it's important to orientate the capital that we're talking about with the city's map. In green, you'll see the pump stations that are part of our assets. And dark green, you'll see the Treatment Plant, represents the Treatment Plant. These are the four pump stations that are located in Daly City. We also maintain three just to the south in Westboro. Okay, sanitation projects that were completed in the 2017, 18 budget cycle on the pipeline projects, El Camino D Street, sewer main improvements, Janipro Serra, Bruno, Ceremony Sewer Main Improvements, totaling somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000 total feet that was replaced with those capital projects. In the same year, we were able to upgrade our sewer inspection video equipment, which is compatible and interfaces with the new asset management, which was purchased in conjunction with Public Works, combined effort there. And we upgraded our antiquated Unix system. I think John referred to it earlier. To a more accurate, useful and mobile and also paperless system. And that's been going well. Additional projects that were completed were 60% design of the Vistegrand Drainage Basin Project, which is one of the largest capital projects ever, I think it is, in Daly City. But there were several items that have been taking place in the last six months that got us to that point and we are continuing on that path. I think also, while I'm talking about Vistegrand, I will also say that with regard to the grants that we are seeking for that project for partial funding, the council knows that we had Proposition 1, Stormwater Program Grant Funding, tune of $11 million. FEMA Hazard Mitigation. We are in the process, in application for a $6 million grant. And also, the State Park and Rec Boating and Waterways, we have a application in for a $2.1 million grant at this time. So we're looking at different kinds of grants for that project and other projects within wastewater system. I think one of the projects that, or one of the areas, PG&E Pump Efficiency Grants, we are working on getting some of those as well through our Plant and Equipment Maintenance Division. So those are some important things regarding Vistegrand that I wanted to bring up. The secondary clarifier coating project, this was the second in a series of three. I think when you see the, when we show you the aerial photos, you see those three round tanks. We have rehabilitated two of them so far. And we have one more to go. That'll come in the out years. But what it does is it extends the life of those tanks at least 30 years. And our Chief of Operations has been instrumental in securing the contractors, the technology, and getting those projects completed. So another one was the Final Effluent Forest Main. I bring that up. It's been before you. That is a critical piece of infrastructure that for the next five years, while we're within the Vistegrand project at different stages, we're going to have to be exclusively pumping through that forest main. We won't be able to go gravity because the tunnel will be out of commission. It'll be under construction. So that's a critical piece of infrastructure. We rehabilitated 600 feet of it, the oldest portions, which were about 1977 when they were first built. Bellcrest Lift Station. We were able to negotiate with the city to the south of us, Pacifica, primarily due to Josh's hard work, Joshua Cosgrove's hard work. We were able to get a temporary agreement to pump the sewage over there while we did major upgrades to Bellcrest Station. We were also able to get the temporary agreement to last long enough to where we can do the skyline upgrades as well. So a couple of things going on there in that basin where it's a, it's a high-risk basin with regard to sewer overflows. We have to pump up with two pump stations to get it to gravity to come to the plant. Tertiary expansion design is at 30%. So that's another project that is underway and was initiated in the last budget. Some of the project highlights for the next budget cycle. Maryamel Portal Sewer Main Improvements, Park Plaza, Southgate and San Fernando Main Improvements. Those are at about 90%. And we're working with engineering on getting those out to bid. So those are getting close, the design with those. As I said, the Vistegrand Drainage Basin Project work will continue and it will accelerate as we, as we move forward. We're also going to commission a wastewater master plan. The one we're working off right now is about 1991 and it's almost complete. So that's overdue. We've got some other projects within the plant, Headworks, Bar Screen, the administration. We talked about roofs earlier. We have an old roof that's just about as old as the ones just to the north at the Doger Center. So that is part of the HVAC system and the roof will be rebuilt there, replaced. We have a plant air compressor that's going to be replaced. That's a, that's a large price tag item. It's the air, the compressed air within the plant process is critical to maintaining the biological organisms where they need to be. So we need to force the air in there to get good treatment.
And without that, we'd get a smelly situation, right?
Yes, smellier. Yes.
And resident complaints.
Yes. We're not baking cookies. But nonetheless, we're also, a portion of the utility billing software is going to be purchased through sanitation. The new system, that's, half of it will be utilizing funds from there, from sanitation. This, now, I showed you the other map earlier. This is just another one to orientate you with the water system. I think we talk about these projects and there's pipes throughout the city, valves, hydrants, so on and so forth. What this one demonstrates is where we get our water from. You see the wells. There's a total of six wells and they're centered right around the 280 corridor there. The turnouts are in blue, the arrows, those are connections to San Francisco where we have meters to bring the water in. The circular arrows, that's pump stations. There's 18 of them throughout the city. And then you see the cylindrical blue tubes. Those are all our reservoirs, 11 of them with a capacity of 22 million gallons, roughly three and a half days. So that just gives you an idea of the system and its infrastructure that's out there that we're trying to continuously improve. Some of the projects we completed in 1718 under the Water Pipeline Projects, Rice Wilson. We did about 1,170 feet out there of new pipe. Shirin's Vista, there was about 3,000, 3,500 feet done out there. Reservoir 3, which has been determined to be a critical piece of infrastructure. We were in design and had to interrupt it for a short time. But that's been determined that that is a need for fire flow in Zone 3. So that, that work will commence in the, in the next budget cycle. We'll complete the design and in addition, we will construct. Westlake Pump Station Electrical Upgrade Design has been completed. Alta Vista Pump Station, we've replaced a hydropneumatic tank. And in the out year, there's three major projects. I think I just spoke about Res 3. Complete the design and construct our water system master plan. I talked about a wastewater system master plan, but... a wastewater system master plan, but it's, we are proposing to do a water system master plan as well, because both of the two master plans that we have been working off of were essentially done at the same time, 1991 and '93, I think, were the two dates. And they're, they're near completion, and some things have changed as well. So we will, that'll be an effort that'll be in the next budget cycle here. Also, the utility billing software upgrade, the 50% share will come out of water, and the other one will come out of wastewater sanitation funds. And at this point, I'm happy to answer any questions on that portion of the capital improvement program.
Thank you very much, Director Piccolotti, for the, our presentation at this point. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for stepping in earlier. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments?
Hi, there.
Okay, Councilmember Sylvester.
Am I ahead of the game here? I'm looking at, I wanted to discuss the organization chart, but we worry about that.
Yeah, that's in the next.
Okay, I'm ahead of the game. All right, thank you.
I'll be presenting that.
Maybe within a minute.
We'll see.
Are there other questions on the Water and Sanitation CIP? Okay, seeing none, or hearing none, we'll go ahead, Tom, and you can start your...
Okay, great. Thank you, Pat.
Budget review.
Thank you. Mission Statement of the Department, the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources, this is our biennial budget for 19, the years 2019, '20. Department of Water and Wastewater Resources Team of Employees proudly serves the community by providing safe, clean drinking water and protecting the environment by collecting and treating and disposing of wastewater. The current organizational chart is currently on the board, and that's, as of today, we are proposing some, a couple changes to it. If you go to the next one, the proposed chart, what you'll see is a couple different positions that have been, one is mandated, we are mandated to have independent lab analysis done. So it requires, because we're a water and wastewater system, we're required to have an additional lab technician. And the lab supervisor is to maintain independence from those samplings. So that's one of the positions that we're requesting for those reasons. PNE maintenance electrician, we're asking for an additional one right now. Probably 75% of the work has to be contracted out, and our responses to a lot of the emergencies that take place as, sorry, as we, the water never stops flowing, whether it be on the clean side or on the wastewater side. And we're just, we need to be able to respond in a, in a better way to some of the electrical emergencies that happen. So we proposed a second electrician. The other, one of the things that was born out of our values surveys and our, and our values committees that were formed at the plant in the last few years was the Safety and Training Compliance Officer. This is a, a position that would take over the safety program and also training, which is some of the areas of certification that are required, and we're required to maintain and keep up certification for the employees that work within the industry and in this plant and the system. So those are some of the three critical changes that, that we are proposing to the organizational chart.
Thank you, Mr. Piccolotti. I went through the organization chart, and this really helps when you got the current and proposed. It enabled me to go through. My concern is, well, let's first start off with the Safety and Training Compliance Officer, which is another, another position. And of course, I can understand the requirement, and to keep, I guess, everyone up to date in training. Was there a job announcement for this, or did it come from within, and, and somebody obtained this position?
These are proposed changes.
Okay.
So unless the council approves the budget.
Okay.
Then they do not exist. So I think what would be helpful for Mr. Piccolotti to do is to tell you, if you're interested, how we are proposing these positions, and what positions are no longer going to be included in the budget. We, we can tell you how it, it's actually cost neutral to do what we're doing. But these are just proposed positions. When and if the council approves the budget, then there would be job announcements that would be circulated, and people would be able to apply for the, for these positions going forward.
Great. So I, I'm trying to get the neutrality, the neutral part of it. So I see that we lost one district system maintenance worker, too. So you're going from 11 to 10.
Yes. Also, the previous, if you look at the previous one, there was a, the collection and, and distribution system manager was one position that's been divided. That was one of the reasons for that, the subtraction, the reduction of that position.
Well, yeah, I see it's a different column now. All right. 12 Water and Wastewater operators, and you've taken one out from there, and you're going down to 11. That's another loss.
Yeah. We have, we have had a, a senior position vacant for some time, and that's where that position is going.
And then we lost one plant operator, too. I see you got a plant ops maintenance worker, too, but then you lost a plant operator position on the current. All right. And then warehouse, oh, warehouse clerk.
Yes.
You're, you lost, you, well, you still have the lead, but you're adding, oh, you lost a warehouse clerk.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
And then two PNE maintenance electricians?
Yes, that is the, one of those is an additional.
You're adding one?
Based on, yes, sir.
All right. Just wanted to confirm, and as Ms., the city manager had made mention, the appropriate job announcements would go out.
Absolutely. And I think it's important, again, to emphasize that Mr. Piccolotti has been working very closely to me since he took over as the Acting Director of Water and Wastewater. And so I'm putting the budget together. His proposal that I reviewed really did look at each of the positions that they had that were vacant. And in conjunction with his staff, who are supervisors, they determined where the real needs were and identified the critical positions, one which I have supported for a long time, which is that Safety and Training position. I think we really need that position. And I think it will go a long way to supporting staff in water and wastewater. So through their efforts, they identified these positions and felt that they could make trade-offs and still make the operation work effectively and efficiently by eliminating one and then adding another, and that kind of, and splitting up one position into two positions. So I think that what they have proposed is something that will work very effectively for them going forward.
That's good to know. And I thank you, Mr. Piccolotti, and the rest of your staff for putting in so much work, and that explains it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
These leads to support.
Thank you, Pat. Moving on to core services, protect public health, safety in the environment, retain credibility with our community, outside agencies, and public stakeholders. We promote water use efficiency. Ensure regulatory compliance is one of the critical and overarching functions that we perform. Essentially, we're performing about 17,000 samples annually, which averages about 45 per day, roughly. So intensive in terms of, of the water quality issues that we're dealing with, and, and we are mandated to, to maintain.
And doesn't that continue to increase almost every year?
It, it does seem to, it seems to, yes. It, it has been increasing over the years. So yes, we're currently about 17,000 now, so quite a few. We, we maintain a 24/7 operation, and I think that's important to note out. We are round the clock. So the plant's running around the clock, and we are responding to our public needs at any hour of the night, whether, regardless of the weather, or regardless of the request. In the support for citywide priorities, this includes economic development and revenue enhancement. We participate in the inspection, and whether some of the projects that come, we can deliver the water. We're, we're working closely with, with ECD and with engineering and Public Works on a lot of these issues. Citywide priority to protect public health and safety. Infrastructure, maintain and improve constantly. We support the government operations, especially here at City Hall, making sure there's water and hopefully not flooding anything. But communities and civic support is important. Some of the accomplishments of the previous year, we had, and I spoke about it in the capital, because it's such an important project, it, it expands the different areas of our operation. Certification of the final environmental impact report for Vistegrand Drainage Basin Improvement Project, the, the council adopted the SEQA findings, statement of overriding considerations, the mitigation monitoring and reporting program, and approved the project. So we're, we're moving on down the line and making that project a reality, and, and that's at the council's leadership. Five-year renewal of our NPDS permit that keeps us operating the plant to the, to the levels and the discharge levels that we're currently at for the next five years. And a lot of work was done by our current Chief of Operations on getting that permit approved. So good work done there as well. Implementation of the multi-agency groundwater stores and recovery agreement. We were notified today that we will stay on conjunctive use for the next year, which will mean that, it's a good thing we're building up the levels in the aquifer. San Francisco, Greg Kraus was in a meeting today, and they stated that we would stay on conjunctive use. So that's...
What does that mean?
That means that there's sufficient supply. We've had enough rain that we, we can stay off of it and, and continue to use hatchatchy water exclusively. That's the short of it.
So we don't pump?
Right.
It means we don't pump our, through our wells. We are able to buy surface water from the hatchy system. And by so doing, we're replenishing the aquifer and maintaining those reserves for future drought periods when then we wouldn't have access to surplus surface water to purchase, and we could then draw on our reserves in the aquifer.
Yes. And we're building credit in the aquifer during that time. Okay, there we go. We, we have successfully, we believed, and we discussed this quite a bit, we've, we've transitioned. We had a long-tenured director that sat here in 20-something years, and, and we feel like we've transitioned through that period of time of unknown. And I feel like we've continued the good programs and the good progress, and also we've, we've enhanced in some areas as well. More of the accomplishments in the 1718 budget, we have made it a top priority to develop some of our in-house employees and, and promote them upward. And, and they have benefited from city-sponsored programs, the Leadership Academy, the Supervisor's Academy, several different things. And, and it has, there have been good results on our in-house employees being able to move up and step up to challenges. Implementation of the Lucidity Asset Management System, this was, as I said, a combined effort with Public Works, and, and I think the, the results so far have been really good. We are implementing it. A lot of different areas where it's becoming part of, the, the mobile aspect and the paperless aspect are, have been really important drivers of that system. We've completed, as, as I stated earlier, the 30% design of the tertiary expansion project, rehabilitation of the final effluent force main, secondary clarifier project. Goals and objectives for the coming year, we're continue to provide the efficient and effective customer service. Thank you. Continued development of our staff through their certification programs, because I've, we, we are, we've had some, a lot of turnover in the, in recent years, but I feel like we are a very competent and certified and professional staff, however, not as experienced. But, but I think they make up for that a lot with the, the certification programs and the training that they get. So that's a credit to the leadership of the city that we're able to train them in-house.
That's a really important accomplishment, and something that will continue, I think, under Tom's very capable leadership and that of his supervisors, his staff. They do a really good job. It is getting increasingly difficult in water, but particularly wastewater, to hire entry-level people the way that historically we have, and, and grown them up in our system. Every wastewater facility is facing the same kinds of challenges. People are, just are not entering that professional discipline as they have in the past. And so it becomes even more critical for the leadership of water and wastewater to support the development and training of the staff there, to advance to more senior levels, and to really encourage them to complete their education, to expand their certifications and that kind of thing, because they are going to be the future leadership of the Department of Water and Wastewater Reserves. And it's important that we invest in them, and that we encourage them, and that Tom and his staff, his, his senior staff are the role models for those who are going to follow them and really support them and encourage them. And, and I think it's something that they have all taken very, very seriously, and that is helping us to be able to maintain our system and not be able necessarily to recruit new people, but to train people up to do more senior-level work.
Yes. Capital projects, we continued system reliability, continued preventative maintenance, prolonging the life of critical assets. Administration of the Southwest Side Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agency with our partners, that's part of the conjunctive use and, and keeping the health of the aquifer. Continued development and implementation of Vistegrand Drainage Project, identifying new sources of potable supplies, investment in the recycle water system to offset existing drinking water supplies. Significant changes, the increased laboratory testing, as we spoke about, education and training budgets, support the incentive program, increased regulatory compliance mandates that were discussed, full implementation of the Lucidity Asset Management, water rate analysis, and development of the long-term rate structure, sanitation rate analysis, development of long-term rate structure, development of the new water and wastewater master plans that I spoke of earlier. And we, the budget summary by category. Overall, 2.9% increase is, is what we're seeing in the, in the next budget cycle. You see the total of 2.9%. The fund, total expenditures. Going up just slightly. Whoops. Here's a, a further breakdown, salaries and benefits. By the water fund. Sanitation fund, going up just slightly, 4.2% on the sanitation side, little bit less on the water side. Whoop. And that pretty much, unless there's questions on that, in that area, completes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very, very much.
Yes.
And I, at this moment, I'd like to thank all of the employees of the Department of Water and Wastewater. You know, you definitely provide an essential service for each and everyone of us. We would not have clean water, and definitely would not be able to dispose of our wastewater. And so thank you for your efficiency and your effectiveness. So at this point, I am now looking at my colleagues for any questions or comments.
I just have a comment. Ms. Martel, I want to thank you very much. I had no idea about an aquifer until tonight. Kind of, it reminds me of... Kind of reminds me of the United States hoarding gas and don't want to use it, but until the time comes when we really need it. But the aquifer, I mean, that is such smart thinking. I mean, I just can't, no words can explain the forward thinking about doing that particular project. I want to bring up an issue. I've been getting complaints, and there's always two sides to a story, and I'll start off with one, where a particular home buyer, and I won't mention the development, sold their home, they purchased a new home, and when they got down to the wire, the previous two months before moving in, their home wasn't ready. So this person called me and said that, according to the developer, Daly City has been stalling to issue a COA, Certificate of Occupancy. And rather than, you know, I reached out to try to find out, is this true?
No.
And no, it wasn't true. What I learned is through the Planning Division, through Public Works, through wastewater, that the developer failed to comply with different stages of the work completion. And one of the major important parts was hooking up the main water line to the homes. How can you issue a certificate of occupancy if you can't even flush your toilet? So I make this comment because the time I've been here, I've really learned a lot. The collaboration between all the particular departments here in the city is outstanding, and citizens need to know this, and they have to ask the question, and questions have been answered. So I want to provide kudos to all departments so far who have been here before us to present the budget, because I, and I'm sure the rest of the council, really appreciate everything. You folks are the unsung heroes, so I want to say thank you so much. That's my comment.
Vice Mayor.
So as I understand it, then your department is funded by not the general fund, but these other funds, right?
The enterprise funds, yes.
And so I guess my question is, so here's my thinking. So in the event of, let's say, like a natural disaster, my question is, does your funding sources also have sort of like a reserve fund? And do you know if, if we had, I'm not familiar if we've ever had to rely on the federal government for any kind of disaster situation that may have happened in Daly City in the past? And like, for example, with FEMA, that kind of thing? And I guess I'm just, I'm curious, is there sort of a rainy day fund for your area?
So the answer to your question is yes. Both of the enterprises, the sanitation fund and the water fund, have reserves, and those are in place for those unanticipated emergencies that might arise. And over the years, at least the years I've been here, we've had a variety of different kinds of emergencies. Some of you may remember the water line that, over on, off of Hillside, several years back, that resulted in quite a mudslide. Some of you may also recall, while that was a very unfortunate incident, that the staff at Water and Wastewater immediately jumped into action, and within a matter of eight hours had pretty much cleaned up the area, taken care of the most immediate impacts of that particular pipeline problem. It took a while for us to take claims from residents whose homes, you know, suffered a little bit of damage, but cleaning the street of the mudslide and everything, the water, things that were of an immediate emergency, they were taken care of right away. We've had other emergencies in the past. Some of you may recall when we had to red-tag a number of homes up on Westline Drive back in the late 90s, and it was the result of the earth shifting above Muscle Rock, and one of the problems that helped to identify the problem was the fact that we had water lines and sewer lines and gas lines under the street that kept separating. And we would go out and do repairs, but we didn't understand in the initial timeframe that those pipes were separating because the earth was shifting. So we'd go out and repair them, and then several weeks later, we'd have the same problem. It got to the point where PG&E decided that they were no longer able to maintain the gas lines because there was a lot of earth movement. And in fact, when we did building inspections, foundations of the homes in that area were beginning to move. So 33 homes were eventually red-tagged and deconstructed in that location. It caused Water and Wastewater to have to reroute those pipelines that serve those areas and that kind of thing. We actually had to absorb the cost of that.
The federal government didn't?
Not in that situation, no. They did not assist us with that, with the pipeline. Now, they did assist the homeowners with some funds for relocation, but they did not assist the city in rerouting the utilities there. That was on us and PG&E to do that. So we've had a number of emergencies. We lost a stormwater line in Avalon Canyon, you may remember, in the El Nino storms, and we did not receive any FEMA funds during that particular incident, but we had to rely on funds that the city had available in reserves to make the repairs. So there had...
The funds, are you talking about the rainy day fund that you guys have?
Yes.
Okay. What is the amount, or what's the number of days?
For the sanitation, when you go to like 180 days of operating expenditure, it's higher than the general fund, because we have to maintain the debt service requirement, so there's a very, very strict restriction on how we are going to maintain the debt service.
So we've issued bonds, and so as a requirement of the issuance of those bonds, we have to maintain the debt coverage on that, and so we are required to have 180 days.
Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Sure. Yes. Okay, at this moment, we'll take a five-minute break.
Should I break?
Yes.
Oh, okay.